Twenty twenty-five, we will call it order, the meeting of the City of Larry Crossing. Moment of silence. Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The good republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Should be a same one.
Chris Madrid.
Cindy Cash.
Joe Cimugio.
Scott Pitcher.
Tammy Hodges.
All right, we're going to move on to number five, continuation of public hearings from ten fourteen to twenty twenty-five. First one is Larry Trail's improvement area number one, assessment levy public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to hear testimony and make a consideration accepting and approving a service and assessment plan, and an assessment role for improvement area one for the Larry Trails Public Improvement District, and levying special assessments against property within improvement area number one, and establishing a lien on such property. Sorry, we'll call to order the public hearing at seven one. Is anyone here to speak for or against what I just read off? All right, moving on to the next one, Larry Trails ONM PIT, assessment levy public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to hear testimony and make a consideration accepting and approving an operations and maintenance service and assessment plan, and an assessment role for the Larry Trails Operation and Maintenance Public Improvement District, and leveling special assessments against property within the district to pay for supplemental services and establishing a lien on such property. Is anyone here to speak for or against said PIT? All right, with that being said, we will close the public hearing portion at seven oh two. Our next item is discussed, consider an act to approve consent items, meeting minutes of October fourteenth and twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, financial statements, and permits for October twenty twenty-five.
Y'all make a motion that we approve the consent items, meeting minutes of October fourteenth and twenty eighth, grant statements and permits for October twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, presentation comments by citizens. Anyone hasn't had any time, or hasn't taken a chance to come put your name and address on the list, you're more than welcome to, to make sure your voice is heard on record. All right, with that being said, we will start at number one, Ms. Courtney Jones.
Courtney Jones, sixteen fifty-two South Bridge Farmer Road, and I am speaking on item nine J. Please, Courtney, please. So I want the background in you to adhere to ordinance three oh three, and I also understand that they have an ordinance three fifty-six. I have read those, and I see they are violating several items on the ordinance. Just to name a few, amplified music, vans, microphones, door on east side of building, days and times of operation, and they have posted hours starting at six again every day of the week. I would like to see that these ordinances are followed and enforced.
Sorry, I was writing. Our next one on this is Ms. Linda Helselbeck. I'm sorry if I butchered that.
Helselbeck.
Helselbeck, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. As far as what's on here this month, or this time, I don't see anything, but y'all discussed having a police force, and also you just said about speed bumps. Okay, so I guess my, well, first, I'm Linda Helselbeck, one oh five South Bridge. Okay, and so what I was asked wanting to know is, the duties of the police officer, their duty is to stop speeders, or, or what, what, what is their duty, Cindy?
The duties would be to adhere to Texas law, penal codes, and also to our city ordinances, to make sure that they enforce ordinances as well.
Okay, so as far as speeding trucks and all that good stuff, right?
Typically, yes, general traffic control.
So what is the reason for the speed bumps?
We've had individuals or citizens that live on South Bridge Farmer Road ask for a deterrent for speeding on South Bridge Farmer. So we have hired our city engineer to determine which are the best locations for speed humps, not speed bumps, speed humps are slightly different. They're slightly raised to keep individuals from going over the posted speed limit. We have had certain individuals actually get traffic expectations going sixty, sixty-seven miles an hour, and it's posted thirty miles an hour. So it would be a deterrent for not only citizens of Larry Crossing, but those that uses a cut through to adhere to our speeding ordinance.
Correct. I understand that, but I also understand it costs money for both.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we are hiring a police force, they're out there stopping the speeders, and we're also getting money from them, to help pay them. Is that correct?
That is not the only reason for obtaining a police department.
No, for the safety.
It is for safety, yes.
And for trucks that go along on the road.
Commercial, yes, correct, but the main reason would not be for revenue.
Right, I mean, I understand, I mean, it would be money to pay. Whatever money was collected would be go towards paying a police force.
Correct, it would go back into the budget, correct.
Right. Okay, so I guess I don't understand why we're doing double when it, it costs money. So, anyway, that was a concern that we talked about afterwards, and.
All right, thank you, I appreciate you, thank you. All right, with, those are the only two that signed up, we did have more individuals walking in, I will allow if you guys want to sign up with your name and address. If you want, we're still in the public comment section, and we're trying to get chairs set up. So if you want to speak, you're more than welcome to put your name down, and then you have three minutes to talk, if you have anything to cover. Say it again?
Observers.
Okay, cool, all right, thank you very much, I appreciate y'all. All right, we are going to move on now to recognition of individuals by mayor and council. Does anyone have any, any recognition? No. I do, I have recognition of you guys. I would like to recognize all the veterans, it'd be Veterans Day, we're still hosting our meeting, and I appreciate everyone making it out on this holiday. So thank you to our veterans in the audience, and also on council that have served, you know, and made that sacrifice. I really appreciate you guys.
We do, yeah, we do want to recognize Cynthia for her years of service as well. So she is selling outfits on set.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the beautiful flowers on the card, so.
So thank you, Cynthia, thank you again for your years of service, I appreciate you. Anybody else? All right, now we'll move on to our business items, nine A, discuss, consider an act to canvass the results of the November fourth, twenty twenty-five election.
Canvas of the general election by Caleb Brown, the elections administrator of Collin County, Texas. I, Caleb Brown, the undersigned elections administrator of Collin County, do hereby certify that the figures contained in the official election results report accurately respond with those recorded on the return sheets. Accordingly, I present the following report and my findings as the final official results of the November fourth, twenty twenty-five general election for the City of Larry Crossing, held in Collin County, Texas. I further certify that these results represent a full, true, and correct tabulation, audit, and count of all votes passed in said election. Witness my hand, the eleventh day of November, twenty twenty-five. In the mayoral race, Pat Kelly received two hundred and ten votes, and Sally Cooper received one seventy-six. Ward one, Scott Pitcher, fifty-one, Chris Madrid, fifty-four. Ward two, Tammy Hodges, eighty-three, Al Gore Rios, fifty-seven. Ward three, Ezebio, Joe Trujillo, one oh five, Cindy Cash, sixty. And ward four, Always Simpson was the only candidate, and he received thirteen votes. They did not have a big turnout. And that is.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
Y'all make a motion that we canvass the results of the November four election in twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Glad to be a part of you council members.
All right, if you will all stand. And we are going to do this as group, if you will raise your right hands, please, and read along with me, instead of doing two words at a time, we're just gonna, we're gonna start to go. I.
Chris Madrid. I swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council members of the City of Larry Crossing, State of Texas, and I will to the best of my ability to serve the state and the Constitution of all who live in this state. So help me God.
All right, you will need to sign that and return it to me before you leave tonight, and then we are going to send it back. You're not going to get another copy. All right. I have Scotts.
Thank you, Cindy, who you got?
Scott, here's yours.
Musical chair. Better, Drew?
You have yours?
I have yours. And who has?
I have always. The always was under two, for all, yeah, but I got it back.
Check the second page.
Okay. All right, now this is the statement of elected officer. Right hand up. I state to make, I swear that I have offered directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised, stated, contributed, promised to contribute, and in the name of the value of promised to any public officer.
Make all of the copies. Would you like to see the service and assessment? Daniel's team puts all of that together. They do all the analysis.
Can we confirm, of course, like we do with all these others, like our attorneys have reviewed and approved it? It meets all of the standards of that it should determine.
And Daniel, I believe Julie Ford approved all of those documents herself, didn't she?
Yes, do you have your professionals, your attorneys, any review you want to ask that are viewed as well?
So the attorney has reviewed each one of these and approved them?
Yes.
Yes, the whole team.
Any new in the audience out of your bond counsel and financial advisor who's also reviewed these documents?
Without having to read through all these right here for everybody, taking four hours. Which one speaks to the road study that was done and subdivision was in for a percentage of upkeep on Simpson, Meritage, and the lower Bridge Farmer? I believe nineteen percent of Simpson, seventeen of Myrick, thirteen percent of Bridge Farmer.
This is Lowry Trails. This isn't for Simpson Crossing, this is for Lowry Trails.
You didn't do one on this. So they get away with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Correction, there actually was a study done by Green Brick, which is for Lowry Trails. I'm not sure the percentage, but there was a study that was done.
Is the percentage included in these? Their responsibility, so we have a right to. For the maintenance, are the percentages included in these on the study that was done?
The maintenance itself is, so you do have a separate item on the agenda to address the operation and maintenance of the improvements. And that operation and maintenance is based off of the development agreement that the city has entered with the developer. So it's a separate levy that will be maintaining and operating those city-owned improvements. So there are, within the development itself, there are county improvements. But the rest of the other improvements that the city will own will be paid for by the government.
Okay. Any question? Do we, because this is, this is the one, I think, where Green Brick was supposed to pay for their portion, and you're kind of arguing back and forth whether the county was going to pick it up. Do we know if that's been done yet? Because wasn't there a portion of the road that's going to be, like, half of it was going to be the developer's responsibility to pay for? And then the other half, they were kind of hoping. Where is that, can we, do we know where that's at exactly?
It was the, they've already paid it, and we've already paid.
So that's already done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's already done.
All right, cool.
That's that seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar check.
Anybody else have any more questions on this one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept approving and service, approving and service and assessment plan approved in area one. Assessing for, for Lowry Trails public improvement district.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll say it.
Do you take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to F, discuss considering Act upon Ordinance three ninety-three, approving and authorizing issuance of sale of City Light Crossing Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series twenty-two twenty-five, Lowry Trails Public Improvement District Area One project, and approving, authorizing related agreements.
Mayor and Council, Jason Hughes with Hilltop Securities, I serve as the city's financial advisor. So what is being passed around is a short summary of the sale that we actually undertook yesterday. So we sold the bonds yesterday because today is, as today, it is a bond market holiday, it was closed. So once that goes around, I'll go through and give a high-level overview and then certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have. So this is for the Lowry Trails public improvement district. The prior agenda item that you just approved, levied the assessments for that. And so those are the assessments, and those are the revenues that will be used to repay these bonds. So I want to be very clear, these bonds are secured solely by those assessments that are levied within that public improvement district. There's no other city revenues that are being used to repay these bonds. So the city council did approve the Lowry Trails Pid on May fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. There's two components to this Pid, so we have the improvement area number one. That's the portion that my homes built on it first. You also have a future improvement area, so the builder slash developer intends to put more houses on there. But again, what we're selling bonds for, what we're asking for your approval tonight, is improvement area number one. That's about forty point three acres, one hundred and sixty-seven units. The average home value is three hundred and forty thousand, so you can see there the projected build-out is a little over fifty-six point seven million dollars. What the Pid bonds will fund are reimbursement to, or reimbursement to the developer for public, certain public infrastructure items. And those include streets, water, sewer drainage, and then soft costs. Again, these are reimbursements, and the nice thing is, all of the improvements have been put in, tied to this bond issuance. Again, I said there is a future improvement area. It is anticipated that the developer will come back to you at a time in the future where they will request bond issuance to reimburse them for those public infrastructure items associated with this. They are planning on three phases in that future improvement area, two hundred and sixty-eight units. And then using that same dollar per home value, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, the build-out on that would be a little over ninety-one point one million. So as far as the bond overview, the final par amount that we're asking for your approval, seven million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand. These are thirty-year bonds, which is common for these types of bond issuances. And the final true interest cost for average rate, if you will, is five point six eight five percent. So if you'll turn with me to the second page. Again, as I said, seven million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand bond par amount. There's different components that are included within the bond issuance. First being a debt service reserve fund, so we do have one year of maximum manual debt service that is set with the trustee. And basically, if there was a kind of large-scale non-payment of assessments, that would be available to pay the bonds, again, for a one-year period. Certainly don't anticipate that. Then all of the fees associated with the issuance of the bonds are self-contained within the bond. So that's another way the city is not having to come out of pocket to pay professionals, to pay the underwriter who goes out markets and sells the bonds. It's all within here. And then the last thing, Daniel, again with P three, who was just up here, is the Pid administrator. They and their fee are paid out of those assessments. So again, the whole concept of the Pid is to localize all the costs with the people who will be benefiting from the Pid. And again, not spreading that out over your entire citizen base. So one of the things that we do look at is kind of the affordability, if you will, of that Pid. And so as you can see there under that tax rate analysis. So the capital assessment and what's going to be used to repay the bonds, the tax rate equivalent is a dollar nine cents. The bonds came in at a much lower interest rate. And so that tax rate equivalent, just over a dollar nine, is actually about twelve point four cents lower. And what that means is your citizens are paying less on an annual basis because of that. So Daniel also talked about there is an MNO assessment, approximately seven point three cents. And then the overlapping taxing entities there, Princeton ISD, Collin County, Collin College, so we add that in. Their tax rates, combined tax rates, are just under a dollar forty-four. So ultimately, what that gets you to is a two dollar and sixty cent, just over, overlapping tax rate. I will tell you that while it differs from place to place within the greater DFW area, what I typically see is anywhere from two dollars and eighty-five to maybe three oh five. So certainly well within that range. So be happy to answer any kind of questions you may have. Travis Lyle is also here, he is with Norton Roads Fullbright, he serves as bond counsel. And as Daniel mentioned, as well as Janice, so myself, I represent solely the city in this transaction. Travis represents solely the city, same thing for Daniel. And then, of course, we have been in contact and have provided all these documents to Julie Ford, who has reviewed them as well. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or provide further detail as you would like.
Yeah, the other question I guess that I have is the difference, I guess, between the total fifty-eight million four fifty of what it actually should be? At, you know, one hundred and sixty-seven homes at three quarters? Is that, those are the fees that you're talking about, the one point six seven is the Pid administrator, all that stuff?
So on the first, no, those are actually the number of homes, I apologize, I should have gone into a little bit more detail.
Okay, so that's, that's not an actual dollar for dollar?
It is not a dollar for dollar, so one hundred and sixty-seven homes at an average home value of three hundred and forty-five.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, cool.
A motion that we approve, resolution number one fifty-four?
I'll say it.
No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to G, discuss considering Act upon Resilience one fifty-four, approving and authorizing a maintenance agreement for the Lowry Crossing Public Improvement District Area One and providing for immediate effective date.
My motion was one fifty-four, good motion. Okay, so I skipped ahead, I'm sorry, my motion was for resolution one fifty-four, I apologize, I needed to amend my motion then, we're on three ninety-three. Okay, so, yeah, I made a motion.
Who made, you made?
He made the motion.
One ninety-three.
Great, I did it incorrectly, so.
And then you said.
I amend my motion. And accept ordinance number eight three ninety-three. Second.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
No second, motion carries. Okay, now move on to G. Discuss considering Act Resolution one fifty-four, approving and authorizing a maintenance agreement for Lowry Crossing Trail Public Improvement District Area One and providing for immediate effective date.
Good evening, this is Travis Lyle of Norton Roads Fullbright. As my colleagues, Jason Hughes and Daniel spoke to already, we're still on the topic of the Lowry Trails Public Improvement District. This maintenance agreement essentially covers the responsibilities of the Lowry Trails Residential Community Incorporated in maintaining the landscaping that's going in into improvement area number one of the Lowry Trails Public Improvement District. While the landscaping improvements will be dedicated and owned by the city, this nonprofit corporation will be the entity responsible for maintaining that landscaping. This maintenance agreement essentially runs through the responsibilities of the corporation in maintaining those relating to both the standards that they're going to be held to, as well as the insurance that they'll need to maintain. Then, of course, the city will still be able and have the ability and right to go on to that property that they are maintaining. So happy to answer any questions there.
If anyone has any questions, feel free.
Hey, the only question, I guess, the only question, is, is, there's two shaded areas, is that at all involved in this? And then, I guess, who sets the, who sets the requirements of, like, hey, this is what we're going to kind of maintain or, you know, put in year after year? And then, yeah, is there, like, a consistent, it'll always be whatever, whatever flowers, or whatever you guys are going to do?
Right, yeah, so, so.
Yeah, what's the, what is, like, who sets that, and does that, does that change?
No, that should, that will not change, those standards are set to when they were agreed upon between the city, as far as negotiations between the city, the city attorney, and this corporation, this nonprofit corporation. All of that is inside of the maintenance agreement. Of course, the maintenance agreement can be amended under certain conditions. But absence of consent from both parties, then those changes, they will not be incurred.
Okay. I don't really see those, but that's a lot of stuff. Do you guys remember seeing that? As far as what the standard was in the, I don't. Yeah, how do, how do we get that?
The maintenance agreement, I have a, I have a copy here that I can pass on, unfortunately, it's just a single copy, but I'd have to share that.
Yeah, because they'd be great. Yeah, I'm just curious, like, what the standards, who's setting that, what is, you know?
It's been planned with interest.
Well, yeah, yeah, whether, like, where it's going to be, if it's multiple places, what's, yeah. Yeah, but that's what, that's what I'm asking, is it, is it going to be under this agreement? Or once the, it's transferred, are they going to change it to where? Again, yeah, if we have five dollars, are they going to put five dollars worth of flowers or something like that? You know what I mean?
That'll probably be up to them. That's how it's never been, H O A.
Sure.
Or they have a right to plan it, or, like, just come to all the malls and plan anything?
I know, that's what I want to know, is that specified in the agreement?
It wouldn't, it shouldn't be in this thing. It would be in the dock between the, it would be in the dock between the builder and the H O A when they get turned over, using seventy-five percent of the.
Okay, so, so, okay, so this is, so this does say, like, should the association wish to add hardscaping? So let's just say they're like, hey, we're not collecting as much as we thought in H O As, they have to come to the city. So this does say, add any hardscaping, the Rocket Improvement Association may do only with the express written consent of the city. So that's all I was curious, right, like, if they can just change stuff, or if they have to come back to the city for approval, so that's, that's.
I don't think, we haven't discussed it before, I think. I don't remember seeing.
With the other ones?
I do not, I do not believe that the, that similar maintenance agreement was a part of the previous, for example, Simpson Road or any of the transactions. I believe the past, so far, it's been pretty exclusive to Lowry Trails.
Yeah, and then just as a heads up for you guys, like, this, you know, if, again, if somebody's out there, we see, like, dead shrubs, dead grass, like, they need to replace that right away, like, if they had to leave it, right? So those are just things for, you know, us, our future council board is to know with these developments. Okay, cool. Go ahead, appreciate it. Would anybody else like to take a look, or?
Yeah, we're going to make a motion in Act upon Resolution one four, approving and authorizing the Lowry Trails Public Improvement District.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Oh, seconds.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on. Age, discuss considering Act upon Ordinance three ninety-four, approving Lowry Trails' operations and maintenance, public improvement district operations and maintenance service and assessment plan leveling assessments against assessed property paid for supplemental services within the district, providing for the collection of assessments created in charge and lean against assessed property. Providing penalties and liquid assessments created in operations and maintenance fund making the city funding, serviceability, providing effective.
Good evening, this letter presented before you is continuation as part of the public improvement issue for Lowry Trails Operation Maintenance. So earlier this year, the city did a further creation of this Pid. And what this Pid does, it collects assessments from property owners within the Pid. And this one works a little bit different, it is an assessment that would be levied year over year, depending on your approval. But the development agreements does allow for a tax rate equivalence for that property being developed, the greater of either the certified values or the estimated build-out values. So currently, we do not have the certified values, but we do have the estimated build-out values. And so with that tax rate equivalence of zero point zero seven three four, the total assessments comes out to forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents. So that would be an assessments, depending on your approval tonight, that would be an assessment that would be levied on the property within the Lowry Trails Pid. Happy to answer any questions for you.
Say, okay, say that again, the percentage is zero point?
It's, it's, it's not a percentage, it's a, it's a, it's an equivalence of the tax rates.
Okay.
Which is zero point zero seven three four. And that is according to the development agreement that's seen as a certificate developer.
Yeah, okay. And, and I guess we wouldn't expect that amount to be, since the values haven't been certified, we don't expect that number to be, like, lower or higher? And then what are the ramifications if it is lower or higher? Like, will you go back to the?
This service and assessment plans sets for the greater of the estimated build-out value, which currently, that's what this is using. So once home values are in place, if it has not reached that estimated build-out value yet, it still needs that greater number. So once the certified values exceed the estimated build-out value, then you'll see that assessment amounts increase year over year.
Dennis?
And I believe, if you verify with Daniel, the service and assessment plans, we have, we look at every year, they have to agree. We up to, what's right word?
Yes, the assessments levied year over year. So this assessment is for, this is for year. So we'll see another service and assessment plan each year. Us, P three, as our city's director administrator, we do create those service and assessment plans and move it past your professionals, and I present to you each year.
What's the, what's the warranty on their roads over there for the builder?
What, say that again?
The warranty on their roads from the builders of two years?
Yes.
So in two years?
To your maintenance bond.
In, in two years, at this rate, you're looking at about eighty-three, eighty-four thousand in, in bank. What if they have roads that fail out, the warranty expires, and two hundred thousand repairs, and they come back with another assessment on the homes?
Because there's a set rate in the development agreements, it's, it's going to be based off of that rate. It, it would be presented to you, city council and mayor, each year, that budget number. But unless you decide to work it through your city attorney to amend the development agreements, it's, it's a set rate.
So in the event they don't have enough money or funds to cover the road repairs, how does their H O A move forward with the repairs?
So it is a year-over-year assessments that would be going into a reserve account. So it would have to be something pretty drastic to happen within these two years, or it to be that much of an amount.
Well, if I'm getting that, if there was something, what mechanism do they have to go back and emergency assessment on these properties to cover their expenses?
You wouldn't be able to place an emergency assessment. It, it all aligns to the development agreement, so either you have to amend the development agreement to increase the assessment amount, or the city might have to, might have to pay for those repairs.
Yeah, that's what we want to do. Hey, but we're not having to worry about it until, until year three, essentially. Because again, it's covered in the tier maintenance bond.
Yeah, just like, it has to be in place now, because you can't put it on later.
Yeah, for sure. But, okay, so hold on, so going back to my original thought, is that if, if values are going up, then that number should go up, or no?
Yes, it does, yes.
Okay, so then, so again, from a development perspective, the first, the first year, it's like raw land, base on improvement, so it's minimal improvement value. The second year is typically when that, that'll kick in, so the second year, this should be second floor, depending on how many houses have been built, right, it should be at least a lot more. But yeah, it's going to be doubled, you know what I mean, the question, if there's, if there's that much improvement.
That's what I was getting at, you have to build in something next year, or rates go up, it's the unknown in the future.
Yeah, I don't like that the city would be on the hook for anything.
Yes, we already have our own, most of that to be paid for somebody else's roads that, you know, we don't soon have to, you know?
And I, do you believe that Janice Kurt with the Rock, I believe those improvements, the roadway has already been taken by the city, I believe? Am I true on that? I know it's been planned.
Yes.
At the time of plan, is that when the city accepts those improvements?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yes.
Everything has been signed up on the property, yes.
The city will own the road improvements and the store drainage. The city of Princeton, there's, with the interlo, interlocal agreements, the city of Princeton will own and maintain the water and sewer.
Now, any more discussion on it?
Mayor, I do have a question, I thought this was similar to the other Pids that we had already approved for Meritage. And I don't believe we are on the hook for the Meritage Trails, correct?
Yeah, it should have, again, I'd be shocked if we're here, and it did, because again, we've been talking about this whole time, that it was going to essentially mimic the same agreements that we already had. So, yeah, I don't, who we need to confirm with, but that.
Well, problem is that when they let, I think it was all at the same time, Lennar and whoever owned the land, whatever initials were before Pulte got it from them, council voted to just let it go.
That wasn't.
This was at a different time, yeah, it was a different time. It's when the road study was supposed to be done. I didn't, I went around for the final pay for it, so I don't, I don't know what ended up in it.
That's a serious question. I thought that there was a, somebody said that there is a way, if there is an overage, that they go back to the homeowners or a collection.
Like H O A?
And I don't remember, Julie Ford helped us that, or somebody else, but I remember that was.
Julie did when she was here, and that's all her going over, because people didn't understand how it worked when the, when the law changed back in twenty twenty. And you adopt the roads, you don't get the residents to vote and all that stuff. And they have a Pid, the one infrastructure Pid, is thirty years, it pays the developer back. The secondary Pid for maintenance on property runs for life.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, and included in that was a road study that showed on Meritage, Simpson Road was in for a certain percentage. So their assessment had to pay for nineteen percent of the upkeep on Simpson, seventeen on Myrick, and thirteen percent on Lower Bridge Farmer. That's when they were, at the time, supposed to do road studies on all of the developers and ETJ, so they'd all pitch in their share. And it was this Pid, the secondary Pid on maintenance, that covered that forever. That comes back to my question, that in Meritage, if they have an overage on repairs and they don't have the funds, there's no assessment, I think, in the Pid levy. Some, I don't know how the, the final word it ended up in that one, some of them have the option of taking out a line of credit and then making payments on that too, I don't know. I went around this one, so I don't know how it worked out. So that's, that's what we're trying to figure out, so we're not going to be on the hook for any repairs of the roads and all.
Hey, check out, yeah, maybe, like, I'll check section nine.
Yeah, that's it right there.
Is that covered?
Yep, yep, that's it. It's, it just takes three, section nine on there. So that puts that with the rest, we're not going to put any in.
Mayor, this makes you see those if it's after the fact, so once we get a bill for the works, we would have to wait for the following year for the assessments to be up, correct, as this reads? Or would, it would be at the time of the supplemental assessment? Nine?
A supplemental assessment. I would think it means the same, does it here?
I would think it means the same, doesn't it here?
Does it mean...
Yeah, it's same year, yeah. Any more discussion on this? The only concern I had was the language to keep us from paying for anything.
Yeah, do we think that's enough? Any wants there?
Yeah. It clearly, it's clearly stated that another assessment is made.
All right. Uh, yeah, I'll make a mention that we approved ordinance number three ninety-four, approving Lauer Trailers operation maintenance.
I'll say that.
Operation plan, service assessment plan.
Chris Nicholson, Tammy Segson. Any other discussion? Janice, no, okay.
So, last question.
Yeah.
So this section nine, if I'm asking if it does from covering any repairs?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be another assessment that year. It's not in the same county here, that's how Meritage's been set up.
Okay.
So it's not, I mean, they just, they just need to hope they don't have big repairs over there, they'll get a big assessment.
Yeah, as long as we don't, that's the good one, and that's, it should be good.
Okay, we got the motion, we got the second. And all the paper?
Aye.
Are you against? Motion carries. Okay, on the eye, review update provided, resolution two.
I did not receive any updates prior to the meeting, but I did include a copy of the original resolution two in there. If anybody needs to take that and make revisions. I think Joe brought some revisions with him.
I will, I will give you my copy.
Do you, okay.
What about we table this one? No.
Do, I mean, do we need to add the revisions? Or are we...
Our, see the revision.
Yeah, can we, can we walk through any revisions?
I have quite a few, if, if we have, if we have the time, if we have the moment. All right, um, looking at resolution two, uh, I think we should, uh, go ahead and update this. We're no longer at the size where we call each other aldermen. Uh, we should probably be updated to council members to be, um, politically friendly. These days may...
We're aldermen, we don't wanna be a board of aldermen?
Nah, I think we're past that, we're not that little size anymore.
We need some saddle load.
Um, so that was actually the first two. First two sections of it is what I had, number three.
Well, on the first change, you want that to read council member or...
Oh yeah, sorry, the first change to read council members, sorry. So the very first says the board of council members of the municipality of Lauer Crossing, Texas. So Janice, don't worry, I'll hand you these, you don't have to write everything.
Okay, next one?
Uh, whereas the amount of business required to be conducted at regular and special meetings of the board of, again, council members has grown substantially. And whereas there currently is, exists no established, we're gonna strike established and we're gonna say, uh, if we can, up to date, uh, when it currently exists, or there currently exists no up-to-date rules of order. Because of course, resolution two is already there.
Yeah.
So this isn't, you know, brand new, there's nothing up to do. Again, just ideas, and I, and we can make copies, sorry, uh, I didn't pass this out before. Uh, next one, again, board of, board of aldermen, um, change to get to council members. So anywhere that says alderman will change council members.
Can you change the address on the board?
Yeah.
So, but, yeah, but I haven't gotten to, uh...
Oh, but you already did some.
No, I'm on the, the first page of resolution two before we get to the exhibit type.
And then, uh...
And it says rules of order, we should contain exhibits, uh, one through. And then if we add any exhibits, I'll go ahead and just kinda strike that, but we can leave it open. Says, uh, copies of rules shall be distributed to all council members. Again, council member, yeah, so that's it for the very first page. Yes, ma'am? Sorry, I'm not the mayor.
No, no.
So you want that to say council members versus saying city council? You can say the council members or you can say the city council?
There you go.
City council.
Put it both.
All ready for exhibit one?
Yes.
Okay, so in, uh, reading the updated rules or, um, open meetings act, we can no longer, uh, limit presentation by citizens. It is the public, and public is not limited to citizens. So we would need to update on exhibit one, uh, six, presentation by public. So right here, it says presentation by citizens.
Yeah.
We cannot legally only vote in charge of citizens in Lauer Crossing. Anyone from the public can come and speak.
But they would have the citizens of the entity that supplies to them?
Not based off of, um, the open, open records or open meetings update. Again, please do not take my word. Let's go, do your own research. I do have some Q and As from, uh, the team on legal department. We can also pass out, I wasn't going to print out thirty-eight pages of the handbook on what it states, public each and every time that's citizens. Again, these are just, just my, my two cents. Only other, uh, change?
Sure, can I? In, in our current one, we have a pledge, this one doesn't have a pledge in there. She's got that back to number two.
Yes.
And again, just eleven says items from the board, says items from the council for one-eleven. Exhibit two.
A week.
Sorry, we have any, my bad.
Next, Dan, exhibit one.
Yes.
Reports for advisory boards and commissions is listed. Scraping the agenda, can we list all those out? Parks, U C, M D.
Yeah, I would like to, I mean...
Done, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, eight, old business, like how would that be? Because again, I, I like the idea of old business, new business, and then of course, the reports. And I think that's like one of our, one of our main dilemmas is we don't know what's going on with the other boards, right?
Right.
Um, so yeah, having that on would be great.
So if we want to, instead of leaving a high-level reports of advisory boards and commissions and receiving each individual, we want to list on here each individual goal?
Well, again, and there's, there, like every month, there may not be a specific...
I think we should list them all out, right?
Yeah, but there may not be anything to talk about, but if there is, we definitely want it on there. All right, like if there's, if M D D's doing something or E D C's doing something.
Right.
Or, yeah, we want that on there.
Nothing to report, then they just put, just shut them report.
Yeah.
No meeting attended, no meeting had.
The only problem, I'll see if we list them out, is that after we approve all this, then we turn around and add another board. Then we gotta revisit this and change it and vote on it. If we just leave it, report of advisory boards, that covers everything covered by the city. Is the way I would say it.
So do we need to take off the commissions? So reports of advisory boards?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have any commissions.
Right.
All right, that's the way I, I read, I mean...
Well, the, the plan needs own, this, planning is only commission. Planning is only a commission.
I make a motion to change the board of, so... Okay, leave commission.
Why don't we just say, oh, reports of ancillary boards, period? Because they still all are kind of members of that, whatever their term for board is.
So we don't need commission there?
I don't, I would, we can ask the attorney if we have to add board and commissions, but then do you say the districts and the corporations because you've got E D C and M D D? So, why don't we just find a neutral term to use?
Yes. Yeah.
I thought it was okay when I was reading it, but if we wanna itemize it, we can, I mean, different about it. It's just more work for Ms. Janice.
Yeah, and then if we come up with a board, then we're gonna change all again, so just leave it boards. What about our moment of silence, anybody? Speak of that?
Yeah, it's invocation.
Invocation?
Invocation, uh, second one.
Moment of silence, why would we just do the moment of silence instead of invocation?
Yes. Get your invitation, moment of silence.
You don't want a prayer?
Don't want a prayer, anybody? You're in a moment of silence, you can do whatever you want.
We don't, we don't have any optional either.
You wanna remove optional?
Yeah.
With the moment of silence?
Uh, well, it's optional.
Yeah, it's not optional.
We had discretion for trial together, but we're in a moment of silence. Hey, Bill, is there anything on exhibit one? Okay, we'll move on to two.
The address on that one has to be changed on one.
Yeah, address, and also we meet now second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Also, the, uh, second paragraph of one, now with the most recent changes, September one, we no longer have, uh, twenty-four hours. So we have three business days, not including day of posting and day of meeting, um, for any type of either special meeting or regular meeting. Only a, an emergency meeting is allowed one hour prior to meeting, but an emergency is a life or death situation. From my understanding of reading.
Yeah.
That's what you mean.
Three days, right?
Your business day is not including day of posting or day of meeting.
I'm not sure if number two is all about.
There's, yeah, there's question marks and I actually...
I just lined through them.
I mean, I changed aldermen to council members, but I don't know if it's about either.
Is that asking if you can compel council members to attend or not compel?
Put two question marks, that could affect you either.
That's cracking, is it?
Yes, that's it.
I'd like to add, um, that the mayor bring donuts to the council.
I don't currently do donuts anymore, but you know, cook using a cake or something like that.
Well, he got cancer and couldn't do it. Don't take my job away.
I'll ask my better seven days to bake a cake like she used to.
Um, three, uh, last paragraph, again, aldermen, but we already know is changing to council members.
To council.
Everything else I have on there is just a matter of changing aldermen to council, to council members.
Yeah, on six oh, where you're talking about the audience participation. Is that what gets, that, that's what needs to be changed on, on, are we gonna pin down five? Are we gonna come back to that?
It'll be four.
Four.
On four, sorry.
We haven't got a...
Should we come back to that?
Wait, where exhibit, what is it, are you still on exhibit two, two, four?
No, I'm just saying, the...
Number six.
Yeah, where you said...
Audience participation, oh yeah.
It does have to do with the, the public portion, or is that something totally different?
Oh, well, I, we can make changes on exhibit, uh, exhibit four.
Okay.
Number two, moving on to three?
Yeah.
Only one I had on this one was, uh, the word alderman on the very, very first paragraph. I did, I did raise an eyebrow to the asterisk motions marked with an asterisk are undebatable motions.
Yeah, I'm looking at two, I'm gonna lose.
I don't believe that there can be a undebatable strength.
What number was that?
So it's the very bottom of the page, says, uh, motions marked with an asterisk are undebatable motions.
Okay.
And the rest of the sentence after an debatable motion is offered, the visiting officer must immediately take a vote. And Ms. Janice, um, or sorry, Mayor, if, if we, if we don't mind, could we make these edits and then us to run it through our attorneys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should do. Now, what, what that means by the motions are debatable on these? These, these are motions, I recognize three of the five under law, that they're not debatable. They, you can make the motion, if nobody agrees with you, there's a vote or not, and just vote no. Proceed on, that's why they had that in there. I don't know that that hasn't changed in all these years. Be questionable at the time.
Yeah, if there's a motion, it's not seconded, the motion dies anyway.
Oh, okay, so, all right, what Pat is saying is that it's not an asterisk on the agenda. It's these asterisks right here on the actual page.
Yeah, it's like if we, we have something on like item page and, you know, you make a motion.
Yeah.
You second it, and before that, during debate, somebody makes a secondary motion. That stops the process by law.
Yes.
Then, if I make that motion and it's not debatable by anybody, it just calls for a vote. If they vote yes with me, then it gets tabled, and vote no, then it proceeds on. I recognize three of the five as being law, I don't know if I'm able to, if, if calling something, we're gonna look at it, I think. Well, I think we've already done that. Is everybody good on three? Should we go on to the next page?
Yeah. Yeah, so this does say, um, okay, but that's, that's a separate section. Presentation by citizens is limited to residents of Lauer Crossing, unless they have their house. That's not what you were talking about, John.
It is part of it. It is, so it was also on, so the very first page, it did say, um... Same, 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 same principle, same concept, that we can no longer, uh, only do it to... So the agenda format, which exhibit one writes, the presentation by citizens. So as we currently have it right now, it also states, um, presentation by comments and slash comments by citizens. And I never caught this until now, we should change that updated to public.
So if I let you say that, anybody else signs it, it's gonna have a say.
One hundred percent because there's their first amendment right. And fortunately or unfortunate, I do follow a part of you that make it to a comedic skit.
Yeah, so here's, it's, so it's five five one dot zero zero two. Where it's open to public, not just citizens.
Very right. And thank you for double checking.
But then, don't we have to change the presentation then? Would it want to, to the residents?
Great, well, we would strike that, and we would say it wouldn't be limited to residents. And the sign-up sheet would still include name, an address, it just wouldn't be an address that was, that's what our city limits.
Okay.
This is more of a procedural, which we are allowed to do by law, on how we see it.
Okay, so for the agenda, we'll just essentially strike the presentation slash comments by citizens to presentation slash comments by public?
By public? Or we can even say public presentation... Or we can even say public presentation slash comments, whichever way you wanna do it, just. So for exhibit four, um, there was an audience participation update that we did receive from Ms. Janis, uh, since up to January twenty twenty-one. Uh, mark that up, uh, updated to, we'll say if it passes this month, November of twenty twenty, uh, five. Sorry to skip on you guys, but I completely like just got rid of exhibit four.
This one?
Yes, and then this one.
Okay, so we're scratching the exhibit four in.
Right, so basically we're trash exhibit four, and then audience participation will be updated by this one, and we'll just put it in there. So this is what we received, part twenty-one, um, so we basically scratch this. And then we would proceed with the audio, this new sheet, we'll go in there. And this one, again, going back to presentation by citizens, just going, striking, it says it can no longer be limited to citizens, must be open to the public. Out of the second paragraph, um, first paragraph, again, striking, saying public, third paragraph. Again, we have to strike presentations will be limited to the residents of light crossing. We can say public, and we still, uh, can require them to identify themselves with full name and address, and to address only the chair.
Yeah.
It says only one presentation per, um, we can't say citizen, we can say presenter at that point. A presenter's, you know, each time I say citizen, change it to presenter, presenter.
Yep.
We're limited to a maximum of three minutes, it's pretty standard, um, for most cities. Uh, next paragraph, I saw nothing wrong with it. Uh, the following says the chair will acknowledge the presenter's remarks, and if appropriate, will be recommended for a subsequent course of action, such as a private meeting, council member staff, or agency. Uh, specify specific agenda items, again, citizens to presenters wishing to address specific agendas, including public hearings, items will be invited to present their views. Uh, striking immediately prior to council discussion relative to that item would be during presentation and comments by public section. So, and in part of the T M L legal department, they had a Q and A, um, it does describe the actual, um, House Bill twenty-eight forty, which passes it, and then there is that very, very good word that says or. Says, uh, before, or during, uh, consideration by council. Again, this is open to deliberation with the council, but I think doing it where they have an, uh, availability to talk about it in the presentation by public section versus each time before we visit every motion.
Yeah.
Next paragraph, um, again, striking presentation will be limited to residents of light crossing, and has to be public again. Um, should a present, uh, presenter wish to address more than one agenda, again, striking citizen. Specific request, should a council member need public input during the discussion, again, striking citizen, and citizens. Uh, decorum, all speakers should direct their remarks to the chair, and we would have to strike personal remarks to or pertaining to an individual are out of order and will not be entertained. We have to strike that. Fortunately, unfortunately, the public has a right to their First Amendment, and they can say, within reason without threat, what they want during the three minutes. And it's during this, uh, T M L Q, Q and A, if you have any questions, I'll pass it around, you can read it. They could sit there and bash us all they want, it's their First Amendment right.
Do they have?
So.
They. Sorry, that was my.
Right, let's do it.
That's all right.
Exhibit five?
Yeah, just the agenda, well, the board stuff, agenda changes I saw.
I would like to add, um, the first one was council members, of course, for aldermen, the next one, it says this includes a meeting, uh, same paragraph, first paragraph, this includes a meeting agenda and meeting minutes, I would like to add audio and video recordings. Just talking about records, just making it, um, open to open record, exactly, making it public. Um, so I know eventually, hopefully sooner or later, we move, we will move to, uh, video recording as well as audio, and making that, um, update to where it's open to the public. Uh, number three is going, uh, third, uh, second agenda says the agenda. Sorry, this is a very, very soft printout.
Yeah, it's the date, the, it's on, it's longer than two hours, so that'll, that'll strike here.
Right, the seventy-two hours, and then also, we, since we have a city website that's actually working, we have to now put a city website, at least two business days, not including the day of posting and meeting. Unless it says this includes regular and special meetings now in Texas, so yeah, so we need to make sure that we, um, do that, and also acknowledge that we have a website, do we not have a website back in nineteen ninety?
Probably not.
Probably not? The internet was around, right?
You don't remember Y two K, that's two thousand?
Oh, yeah.
It was around, but it wasn't.
It was legend. Uh, number seven, um, sorry, number seven, my change is going to be in the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph. It says tape recordings, I think we need to update, we don't do tape anymore, we do audio and video. Um, or we will be doing audio and video, I don't know if you guys are okay with that?
Yeah.
And then, in reading the law, if, since we don't have a full written version of our meeting minutes, and they're, um, not, not word for word, we have to keep it indefinitely versus ninety days. Um, so that was my change, um, it says, uh, set of, I think it said, thirty days after the written verification version of the meeting minutes have been approved. We can either leave that there, if we ever decide to start going to a full written meeting minutes, or we can add, or we should add, uh, ninety days. Something that's.
We keep the recordings indefinitely, they go in the meeting folder.
Right, all right, yeah, no, I know we do that, so I just didn't know if we wanted to update this to basically show what we're doing, um, which is keeping them indefinitely, because we don't have, um, fully typed out.
Minutes.
Minutes, correct.
Yeah. Yeah, we should update, update that tomorrow.
It needs to speak to them being held indefinitely.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was my marking, it says if no, if no written minutes are kept, the recordings must be kept permanently or indefinitely. I apologize, that was a lot of talking.
I would, I would like to add in, if there's any other holes in the, that we find or discover, you know, reference our tools. And it's in there somewhere, we can, he could add the.
Like an exhibit or, um.
Yeah, he could add another exhibit or just take right off of it, so.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else have anything else on this?
The only question that we, oh, we don't do. Oh, we're, we thought that was just one of your.
Okay, move on to, uh, Jay.
That was the one you were, you were postoning, that you requested.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why are we postponing?
If I understand, it's right, they're asking for a meeting here at the forum with their lawyers, our lawyers, and everything else, I understood the conversation earlier. That's not the legal place to, to do that. They wanna request a meeting, they can have it with our lawyer and whoever else here from city meeting, Janice and, and their lawyer, and hash things out in advance. Whatever negotiation takes place, and then bring it all before the council, and what happens, instead of, uh, what could be a two, three hour debate in here back and forth. I'm sure it's a lot of he said, she said.
Yeah, I just have questions, I mean.
We're talking about.
Yeah, the actual ordinance itself.
The actual ordinance itself.
Yeah.
I have a problem with the actual ordinances.
That would be the.
It just, if there's. If there's anything that comes out of, if anything comes out of the meeting, ordinance, I'm gonna change it. I heard that, I heard that video that you took.
What?
I heard that video that you took.
Oh, yeah.
Tom doesn't pick it up as good as you hear, it's loud.
Yeah, but you know, the thing is, it's just, it, we have the ordinance. So we need, they need to go by the ordinance, I mean, we're not sitting here saying, let's change the ordinance, let's, you know. Let's enforce the ordinance and go by what the ordinance says, and they are not.
Well, again, not only that, I mean, ordinance three oh three was the original one that was done, right? And that one we have, it was signed, so that ordinance three oh three is in place, it was signed, it's an effective ordinance.
So three fifty-six was also, both of them were signed, yeah, she's got, she's got the original copy.
Yeah, I mean.
But the, the thing is, three oh three is for fourteen ten. Three fifty-six is for fourteen oh two, fourteen oh four.
Yeah.
There's three different addresses here.
Yeah.
And basically, the, the. The special use permit for the event center is subject to all the following conditions, most of these conditions that's on here is on the three oh three also.
Except for.
Except for all day, except for.
Yeah, not, yeah, not the other.
For every day from six AM till ten PM at night.
Yeah, that's.
That's what it's advertised as, is six AM in the morning to ten PM at night on the weeknights and eleven on weekends.
Our noise ordinance is, um. Is it six AM?
No, seven.
Oh, no.
Seven, seven.
But is it seven, is it seven or eight?
It's seven, it's seven, I believe.
But if you read the noise ordinance, they changed it to higher decimal levels, and I wanted, because if you complain, and the sheriff comes out and has a decimeter, he has to stand at where you're hearing it and read them either. And that, it'll never hit the numbers.
Property line, property line.
Yeah, well, that's what you hear, it would be probably, you'd be across it. It'll, it'll never hear, it'll never hit those numbers, it's in the ordinance.
One ten?
That was, if I recall, it was sixty-eight or sixty-nine.
Um, I, I think it would, it.
I mean, I, I'd be interested to find out, but I just, my experience is, there's numbers too high, and we had the highest numbers in all of Texas.
But that's the, you know, but that's the thing, amplified music, um.
Well, that speaks to it right there, we can't do that.
Microphone, and they did, and, yeah. They have stopped since Chris, pretty much, they kinda, um, toned that down some.
They still have other.
Oh, I know, but some of it, they have.
Yeah, and again, I was, you know, I, I live on Hyatt's Farms, I, literally, every person that lives along Hyatt's Farms calls me, right, to complain. Uh, because again, we, we all moved out here for the peace and quiet of the country, not to have to listen to parties and weddings and whatever else.
Well, but we were all against this also.
And in the agreements, they weren't supposed to violate any of this, and there's been no enforcement rules.
Nope.
So if they're violating, what happens?
They're fined two thousand dollars.
Did they violate it, you call city hall, Janice files a complaint, and code enforcement has to go out and visit them and, and inform them of it, and the whole thing to get written up and start getting fined, that just hasn't happened.
That's why it hasn't happened.
People are calling Tammy, or they're calling Chris instead of calling Janice.
Who's the code enforcement?
Uh, All American Dogs are code enforcement animal.
America's Code, dude, America's Code. They're, they're under ones. We have the dog, American Dogs, and America's Code enforcement.
All under the same umbrella, yeah.
We get a police first, then we could call dispatch, and they would go out, and they would enforce the ordinance. They would have a decimal reader, or whatever the problem was, and then they would just be able to drive one up and go. You got the ads on, they need to be turned off. But I'm sure they got these ordinances, yeah, they should, I mean.
They've already violated them, and they first did the bill back here, and they said everybody correct that, as I know, it hasn't always been done, doors left open.
Yeah, and we, and the last time she came here, Katie, we, I even told her, it's like, you know, we went out on a limb for y'all to be able to do this. So y'all need to get it right and stuff, and that's been quite a while.
And they guarantee, they guaranteed us that they'd do it correctly, and for a little while.
Yeah.
My knowledge, it was in line, now it's just getting out of hand again. The video was ridiculous.
So I have a question, so we can't, I was, I was just asking Chris, so we can't get somebody to be the code enforcer for our town in the meantime, before the police gets here? Like someone to take the test or the exams?
That's who we have.
America, so American enforcement.
Well, if it's during, during business hours, I mean, in Janice's round, you.
Right.
Our rule is you gotta call the city, so you call Janice, Janice can call out code enforcement. About nothing, so before they respond to the call.
And this will be at nine o'clock, ten o'clock at night?
Well, you call the next day, you probably wouldn't do anything, that, at that time, but you.
It was like the city inspector, you know, you're only working nine to five, if something happens after hours, you call.
Bob has said before that he would respond to any call, at any time. So unless someone wanted to volunteer to be the one to, to do the call, and to call Bob, and ask him about it that evening at night, if someone's available. It's, uh, this, this whole problem here is just lacking enforcement.
But, okay, so here's a legit question, is we have, we have proof that there was amplified music, right, on whatever day that, that that was recorded, right? So we have a day, we have amplified music, which you clearly hear from how many people away, this says there's a two thousand dollar fine.
We, we have more than one.
No, no, a hundred percent.
I mean, we have more than one video with the amplified music on different dates. So that would be multiple two thousand dollar fines.
Correct, and their attorney would say, prove it.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
See, see.
I mean, that's, that's just what they do.
Mayor, I just, uh, so, so in order to issue citations for it to be enforceable, it would actually need to be a code enforcement officer, title of officer, to do that, and unfortunately, only All American Code is licensed to do that, we don't have any officers here, nor do we have the system to set it up, or kind of set up for failure. It would need to be one year under another officer, apprenticeship, for then that person to get titled. So the evidence that you would be submitting would be in, in, inadmissible, is that the right word?
Inadmissible.
Inadmissible? Inadmissible, uh, because you are not an officer, code officer.
What about, I thought there was a, there would, because it's a commercial, um, because it's commercial use, there's no, you can't have, uh, pets or animals, not pets, animals.
No, it's, it's non-residential, they are residential with a special use permit. The, the front half of it is commercial. The back half is residential with a special use permit. The code on that that you're talking about says, it shall be unlawful for any person to possess, harbor, or keep any farm animal on any property in violation of the zoning ordinance. Farm animals are prohibited on property used for non-residential purposes. Their property is used for non-residential purposes.
Do they still have miniature horses over there?
They have miniature horses, miniature, uh, cows, yeah, I mean, there's, they're, it's advertised on, like, they have seven animals over there in those pens.
I thought they removed them, that are new plays back here on Sunday, but. Nope, that's no violation.
Yeah, so this is, I guess, this is just the ask, right, we need to, and, and I know other boards, you know, they, they deal with the same thing, there, it's a lot of, it's a lot of, you know.
Well, we start with, we need to call to Janice, uh, formal complaint, maybe, because that's the, that's the route that the councils choose to go, formal complaints, and they make a complaint to Janice, Janice calls code enforcement, we go from there. Coordinates of obviously numerous sections of numerous ones have been violated. So we get a complaint, and the city moves on.
But this happens at, Janice is not here when this happens. Janice is not, and not this one itself.
Well, the next day, you'd have to call her and file a complaint down.
Yeah, but code enforcement's not gonna hear it then either.
No, but code enforcement would go out there and say, we had a complaint last night, this is what it is, you know, next time we have loud music, I'll have to respond at night, and, you know, let's hear ourselves and have a response. Now, it's, it's a rare case that one of the officers responded with a decimeter.
I have one, I can use.
Yeah, that's, well, it'd be nice to see, yeah, but it has to one of theirs, I think they said one officer, this is, this is years ago.
They have a, uh, what did they tell you, uh? The one that you said that, he said that they were not, uh, above the decimal.
Yeah, because they're, I think they have to have.
And that was a sheriff or something, an off-duty sheriff or something that was out there.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, I think they have to have.
One officer that just has a, their state license.
They're, they're not very expensive, they often have them.
Yeah, it's, one I asked, uh, what was his name, Steve, the head motorbike officer, he said each ship has one. It's certified by a state that's like the radar done, and then the other says, that's what they have to go. He said sometimes a guy might be the other side of the county, completely unavailable, so it's hit or miss. But they said just make the call, because there'll be an official report, and call Janice next month.
Well, and I don't think it's the, I don't think it's even this decimal level that we're talking about. We're talking about amplified music and microphone, outdoors.
That's a separate issue.
I mean, that's the, the, no, it's probably, it's probably gonna be real hard to get that, the decimal reading, but the amplified music and the, the other, I mean.
That's what I was getting at, that you're not gonna get anything, a violation of decimal, but they're violating the other section of amplified music. When we went on our field trip, they had their outdoor pavilion, they had one quad outlet, one ten. And everybody's willing to plug in, so you're not gonna plug in the amp, and that, and I blow in fifteen amp circuit, five to twenty. And they said they were not gonna add anything else, I haven't been over there since, I don't know if they made additions, if they did, if they illegally.
Uh, well, they have speaker, they have, what did they tell you, they have one outside speaker that they use, and they have it on low?
Yeah.
When they use that?
Well, they said that if they had something outside, they would, you know, have a, a little speaker box and a mic for someone, you know, and they said it wouldn't be loud.
But yeah, but again, the ordinance says no amplified anything or microphones outdoors, they can have that indoors. So again, it's just, it's just a, you know, again, in my opinion, it's a plain violation.
Agreed.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can, we can take a look and back to whatever we need to do, but yeah, either the ordinance needs to be revised, or the noise ordinance will need to.
Somebody can file a complaint, because Janice is on duty right now, somebody can file a complaint, don't matter who it is. And, uh, she can, tomorrow, send it off to, uh, code enforcement, they can start fresh and early the next trip out here, what days did it come out?
They were here today, but they're gonna come on Wednesday. It's random.
Okay.
Usually Tuesday through Thursday.
Was Tuesday. Okay, so you or your neighbors can, uh, file that to Janice before you leave.
I'm fine with it, I'll, I'll do it.
Okay, doesn't matter who, I mean, it's, it's, you're every right, and you need to, I mean, after hearing that video you took, that's that's totally unacceptable, and they know it.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, uh, actually, I'd like to make a motion to amend the rules of parliamentary and revisit line item C. City. I believe that would require a vote for everyone. Revisit to amend the parliamentary rules.
On C?
Yes, to revisit. Line item C.
Under nine, what I had.
Nine C. I just believe that there's a better candidate for that. Again, I made the motion, it would require a unanimous vote to amend the rules.
Well, I think you can make a privileged motion to, uh, to revisit again.
I make a privileged motion to revisit, uh, nine C.
Okay, so we're back to nine C to discuss, consider an act to elect a mayor pro temp. First, I would need a motion for the current elected one to step down. You can make that yourself.
Make a motion to step down as mayor pro temp?
I have a second on that, it's his wish.
I'll second.
And a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes, so now we have an open slot for mayor pro temp, and at this time, we'll take.
Is that unanimous, I'm sorry?
No, I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm saying.
You abstain, okay.
So now we have open slot.
Uh, I mean, I motion that we nominate, um, I guess I'm drawing, like, Tammy Hodges as mayor pro temp.
You willing to take the demotion?
I'll second.
Sure.
On this one, there's gonna be no discussion, and all of those in favor?
Aye.
That carries all.
Was that everybody?
Joe, you did a very good job, they did.
Appreciate you bringing it. Okay, so, moving back to K.
Two weeks before Tuesday would be eleven twenty-five, and that is Thanksgiving week, so we just wanted to see if, if there were people traveling, would we have a forum, what are we?
I'm here on the twenty-fifth.
I'm here.
I'll be here.
So, uh.
I'm not. So Joe's not available.
I'll be here.
He'll be here?
Yes, sir.
Chris? You need a secretary.
Um, yeah, okay, um.
You good?
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, I know.
Everybody but Joe's available.
Good, yeah.
So the next meeting's scheduled for twenty fifth then. Okay, and with that, if there's nothing further, then we will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-eight. I thank everybody for coming.
Mr. Jay, how are you?